Please bow your heads. God, we come before your merciful throne. We ask that you bless us, keep us, guide us, all of us in this room and all who work for St. Petersburg College. But more importantly, Lord, we ask that you bless our entire community, state, and country. Keep us safe from hurt, harm, and danger. Also, Lord, keep us focused on making sure that everybody has the ample opportunity to get a quality education. We thank you for the job that has already been done. We thank you for the job that's being done, and we thank you for what will be done in the future to affect other people's lives. In Jesus' name, in whom I pray, and in whom's name you may pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a retirement resolution, but Mr. McHugh is not here, so we will do that outside of this meeting. And so announcements, JP Morgan's New Skills at Work, for instance.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm so pleased this morning to announce that the St. Petersburg College Foundation recently received a grant of $250,000 from JP Morgan Chase to develop a new program to help prepare area residents for jobs in Tampa Bay's growing technology market. This grant is part of JP Morgan's New Skills at Work program, and through classroom and online training, this partnership will provide students with high-wage, high-demand skills that respond to the growing needs of our area partners, our corporate partners and business partners. Before I introduce our representative from JP Morgan Chase, there are some others I want to recognize. First, I want to recognize Jackie Skrid and Dr. Sharon Sutterland for preparing the proposal that made this grant possible. Also, I want to recognize Karen Borges and Dee Mortarella, who will be managing the grant. We have a nice team led by Daniel Scott from the Tampa Bay Technology Forum. If you'll all stand up and be recognized. And from JP Morgan Chase, we have Rick Muller, Kyle Thomas, and here to address you this morning is Clay Schnelker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. I want to first thank you guys for inviting JP Morgan here to this beautiful campus. Certainly, the board and Dr. Williams, we really appreciate it. It looks like a beautiful environment here, right on the water. Unfortunately, it's a little rainy out, but it's great. So, you know, I'm just going to say a few words. We are excited, absolutely excited, to partner with St. Pete College and TBTF on this grant. The Tampa Bay area is one of the largest and fastest-growing technology hubs in the state. I'm a technology manager myself, and I can tell you firsthand of the challenges that we have with finding the right people and the demand that we have. So this grant from JP Morgan that I'm very proud to say that we're providing to St. Pete College, hopefully will help with that, and we're excited to partner. Certainly, the partnership between the college and the TBTF organization is going to be a successful one, and we look forward to seeing that progress. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to do a quick photo op?
Yes.
Kyle and Rick.
Thank you so much to the foundation for coordinating that as well. And our next announcement is regarding our outstanding impact by an organization award. Dr. Kaleric.
Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Williams, and members of the board, I'm Susan Kaleric, Associate Vice President for Online Learning and Services, and I'm very pleased to announce that St. Petersburg College was honored by Quality Matters at their annual conference in Fort Worth, Texas last month. Quality Matters is an international organization focused on outcomes-based online learning. St. Petersburg College was awarded the 2017 Outstanding Impact by an Organization Making a Difference for Students category. The award recognizes the system-wide changes made by faculty, deans, and the Online Learning and Services team through our online revitalization process. The QM awards recognize individual and institutional efforts exemplifying a focus on learners, a commitment to ensuring high course quality, and using effective approaches to improve learner outcomes. With me today is Vicky Westegard, who leads the Instructional Design and Technology Group, and I'd like to ask the deans to stand and be recognized for work they and the faculty have put in.
Thank you. And next, we have an update on our SOX QEP, and I am delighted to share that the visiting committee who was here last week had a very, we hosted a very successful onsite visit. We were honored to meet with them over lunch, and then again, I was able to attend the wrap-up presentation on their departure. And speaking of online learning, they were very complimentary with the QEP with respect to the online section, so it was very nice. The committee chair praised the college faculty, staff, and students for the genuine passion, and they were very sincere when they said that when they spoke to the students, it was really such, and the students themselves were so enthusiastic and communicated so much about the QEP and how it made a difference in their lives, and it shows not only why it was such a good plan, but how the faculty and staff and administration has communicated that plan to the student body and really engaged everyone to be part of it. The committee did leave us with one final recommendation concerning the credentialing requirements of three remaining faculty from a prior list of 42 faculty that had been addressed by the college. And as the average recommendations received at this stage is three, the SOX COC Vice President said the college should be commended for conducting such a well-organized peer-review visit. And will everyone who played a role in the SOX COC initiative please stand to be recognized? And in particular, you all know we have three ladies who deserve special attention today for their leadership and commitment to the project, and so Dr. Sabrina Crawford, Ms. Heather Roberson, I practiced and I still got it wrong, Roberson, and Dr. Jennifer Haber. Dr. Haber's not here today, but Sabrina and Heather, could you all please come forward?
Well, I guess I want to thank all of the members of the board, Dr. Williams, and everyone in this room and everyone at the college. This was a group effort, and it is a group success. I've been really honored to be a part of it and to be able to participate and get everybody excited. I should have brought my woo-hoo sign, but those days are over. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So I'd just like to say very quickly, Dr. Haber will get these flowers this afternoon. And for everything that we do here at the college, we do it for our students, so it was really, really great to hear how it's already starting to impact their lives. I mean, we've been, we've had only two class meetings so far for the N4S. We missed our first one during wonderful Irma, and it's really, really wonderful to hear that. And again, echoing what Sabrina said, wonderful team of folks to work with. Thank you so much to our board and our SPC leadership for being patient with us during the topic selection process, all of our various updates that we brought. And then also, thank you to our college community for, you know, just providing the support, the feedback, and we couldn't have asked for a better outcome. It was absolutely amazing. So, you know, wonderful day for SPC. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we have a video to play?
Yes. Oh, no.
We can move on, and if it starts to work, we can come back to it too. So, next on the agenda are common, oh, is this it?
Pumpkin, something, pumpkin John.
There we go. There we go.
I've got a feeling that this year's gonna be a good year. QEP's gonna get a great cheer. When it sets us in, we'll begin for here. It's here's the time, let's live it up. I got my flag, let's hike it up. Go out and wear it like, oh my God. Jump off your chair, let's kick it off. I know it feels awful, it brings QEP, yeah, don't help, don't you know. Feel, trust now, wanna let it go, let go all out, work it out, you play a role. Let's do it, 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 let's do it. I've got a feeling that this year's gonna be a good year. QEP's gonna get a great cheer. When it sets us in, we'll begin for here. It's here's the time, let's live it up. I got my flag, let's hike it up. Go out and wear it like, oh my God. Jump off your chair, let's kick it off. I know it feels awful, it brings QEP, yeah, don't help, don't you know. Feel, trust now, wanna let it go, let go all out, work it out, you play a role. Let's do it, 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 let's do it. I've got a feeling that this year's gonna be a good year. QEP's gonna get a great cheer. When it sets us in, we'll begin for here.
Wonderful. We'll have, yeah, we're going to go back to comments, and just because I'd like to specifically thank Dr. Vidito for welcoming us here today to the Bay Pine STEM Campus. This is my first time being here, and sorry that it's raining and we can't enjoy all the glory out the windows, but it's a beautiful facility, and the college should be very proud to have this here. So, comment, I also wanted to thank everybody again for the SOX visit and all the hard work that went into that. It was a pleasure being a very small part of that. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, great report, great effort. Thank you all for those involved, and I did want to point out that communicating with the hearing impaired involves more than just your hands. The gentleman who was signing for that presentation, he worked up a sweat because I saw him dabbing his forehead as he danced to the entire presentation. So thank you for those signing today. And just a quick note of gratitude to Dr. Williams. She's just shown, exhibited great leadership. She's still in what I think we would call transition, and yet, we've had significant budgetary issues that had to be handled. We've had a hurricane, we've had some staffing issues of significance, and she's handled them with grace, with, again, great leadership. And I just want to verbally offer my support for the decisions that she's made as she has taken over the reins of St. Petersburg College. Thank you for all that you've done.
Mr. Givens?
Good morning. I got a few things, let me run through them real quick. Number one is, Dr. Williams, thank you for all the college has done to help with the FEMA relief effort, I know we had in the Seminole campus, and Mark Strickland, thank you in your campus for all you've done to help with that effort. Also, we were very involved in a lot of different efforts, our students, our faculty, and other folks related to the storm, and so I just wanted to thank the entire staff and the SPC family for that. Two, I have gotten great response on, where is, Jesse here, Carragio? Where's Jesse?
I just, I'm probably.
Oh, thanks, Jesse. It's huge, too. I can't see you at all. Thank you, and Dr. Williams, and the rest of the staff, everybody that has been working on the FUSE and Titan to Rattler program. I have gotten huge response in the last two or three months about those programs, how we've been pushing them, how we've been working on them. And so, just so you know, I didn't go to the homecoming this weekend, Dr. Carragio, but I heard that the Titan to Rattler program came up not only in the board meeting, in the reception, and other places, and they were talking about how it's going to be such a great success, how I'm looking forward to working at St. Pete College. So, Dr. Williams, you would know that William Packer, who is from St. Petersburg, brought the program up again, and he gave $250,000 this weekend to FAMU because of his talk with you at the football game that we had a month or two ago. So, we're making a huge impact, not only at FAMU, but here at SPC as well. So, thank you for all you've done, and your staff, and everybody else, and anybody that's worked on those programs. Number three, Mr. Foster dealt with it, the budget issues. Thank you again, Dr. Williams, doing an excellent job with that. I won't go through it. I think he did a great job of explaining that we have been under tight times, but you've done an excellent job with that. Speaking of budget, I was talking to, is it Coach Crumley or Dr. Crumley? Coach Crumley. Yeah, but he used to be like an associate provost. I don't know if he was a doctor or not, you know, I get confused sometimes. Coach Crumley, and if you would, Dr. Williams, work, and Mr. Gill, David Gill, I know that at one time, we had some discussions about fundraisers, and Coach thinks that it would be probably good to start doing like basketball, baseball camps for kids throughout our community as fundraising types of efforts, and to help us get a facelift to our gym and other athletic facilities to help offset some of the costs that we have related to the budget for our sports programs. If he could work with Mr. Gill and yourself maybe, and bring back a plan to the board so we can see what that would look like and what they project they could do, that would be great. And then, the other thing is, this week, I had an opportunity to speak with some folks at NYU and their programs, and I think you got some of that information, Dr. Williams and Mr. Curran, he emailed it over to you. But one of the things that I was going to say we should look at for, help us with our budget, our bottom line, could be speaking English, SPC English through study abroad, like folks that want to learn English. They come here, they learn those programs, and they pay for them, they go, they learn in those programs, they go back, but it's a huge program, as well as some of the workforce programs Mr. Curran sent to you. And then finally, I'd ask the board to consider, there has been some discussion throughout the community about doing an investiture-type situation for Dr. Williams in the spring. This would not include any dollars from the college, let me be clear. I don't believe the college should pay for it. If the community wants to do an investiture, we should be a part of it, but it should be paid for through private donations, and most presidents have had these throughout the states, now a state that I know of. But I would ask that the board consider having Dr. Karen White, who used to be of our St. Pete Gibbs campus, and I had some discussions about this, and I'm sure she would be more than happy to lead that effort if the board would consider allowing us to come back with a plan and some dates to try to get this investiture service done. We would see it as maybe a two-day event, one is a reception on like a Thursday, and then the investiture ceremony on a Friday, so that people could get back, if they need to travel, they can get back home before the weekend's over and that kind of stuff. So, those are my comments, Madam Chair, and we can move on, I guess.
Thank you. Is the investiture something we need to give direction specifically to you?
I would ask that the board take a vote that we would allow for an investiture be done, but make sure that we put in there that there's no SPC dollars, because you don't want people thinking we're going out having a big party with SPC money while we're on, we have the budget constraints that we have. And there have been some corporations that have come to me, as well as other folks, the Chamber and some other folks, have expressed an interest in doing such a thing, but again, it needs to be with private donations and not with money from the college. So, I will make the motion that we, okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
All right. So I guess we'll ask Dr. Karen White to come back with a plan and give us kind of an overview so we can make an approval of the total plan. Thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Well, a lot has happened since we saw each other last. I definitely want to applaud my team on how we handled the hurricane. I think you guys, the technology folks, security, facilities, faculty, who've had to make a lot of adjustments, staff who came in to make it happen. We couldn't have done it unless we worked as a team. Trusty Givens, thank you. I called you late at night, early in the morning to get Duke Energy to turn, get the electricity back on on some prime campuses, and you were very instrumental in that. I also want to applaud the team on the SOX work, and we've done that, but man, we couldn't have done it without you. You did a great job. I had the pleasure of participating in two PTK inductions, one at Tarpon and one at Gibbs. It was awesome. Golden Key will have their induction this Thursday. I've also had a chance to spend time with our athletic teams. We have another graduation of our corrections department, our correctional teams, I don't know if Dr. Frumrath is back there, but he has a graduation going on this Thursday. Women to STEM at Clearwater last night, Dr. Vidito. Is Dr. Vidito here? I was told that that was just awesome. I don't see Stan, but he's here. And one of our alumni who was, who's an Ashrana was there, and I heard the children ask such great questions of her. I was really, really proud of that. But that would be the end of my report on what's kind of been going on around the horn.
Wonderful. Thank you. We are going to take a few things out of order.
Do you want to do this part?
Oh, yes. Excuse me, do we have any public comment cards? No, we have none. Is there anybody from the public who wants to speak? Very good. We are going to take a few things out of order. Trusty Givens seems to excuse himself in a timely manner this morning, so we're going to take some of our voting items out of order. So the first, I'd ask if the board members have reviewed the minutes, and if there's a motion for approval or any corrections. We have approval? We'll wait for a second.
Just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign this pass? And we're going to hold our monthly reports so we can get through some of these action items. So the first one would be for pathways, Dr. Cooper.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm here to give you an update associated with the guided pathways, and this is in association with institutional policies that are either already in place or have been put in place in support of the guided pathways. And these are a summary of what you have on your board memo, and they are divided by the four pillars that make up the academic pathways model. So, beginning with our first one. There we go. Clarifying the path. Obviously, in October of 2015, the board endorsed our implementation of the guided pathways and participation in the AACC project. Then, to ensure that students are completing college-level gateway courses in English and math during their first academic year, last January, we brought forward the policy where students will do Comp 1 within their first six college-level credits that are attempted and begin their math sequence within the first 12 college-level credits attempted. Focusing on monitoring equity, inclusion, and ethnicity, as you know, we support, we provide a state equity report that you all last approved in April of this year. And then in regards to partnerships with the K-12 transfer institutions and employers, we have the statewide 2+2 articulation agreement. We do an annual K-12 articulation agreement that the board approves, and then we have our program advisory committees that meet two to three times a year and give us regular feedback in regards to our curriculum, as well as how students are doing, that are either doing internships with them or they have been hired by the particular employer. And then we have specific institutional articulations, such as FUSE and IGNITE, which we've heard about earlier this morning, that are monitored and updated regularly with board approval. Next, under helping students choose and enter, to enter their pathway, as you know, Senate Bill 1720 limited testing to high school graduates prior to 2007. So what we put together was a prediction model that uses multiple measures that would help us to identify students who are likely college-ready from those who are developmental ed-recommended, so that our advisors could use this information when working with students. Today, we see that some take our advice, but some do not, and so we have put multiple supports in place to help those students succeed. In regards to mandated orientation, we do have the Smart Start Orientation that all new-to-SPC students are asked to complete, and they do that during the first four weeks of their semester. In regards to late registration, currently, students on campus classes cannot register after the first meeting date, whereas with our online classes, students have to register for those by the Sunday of the first week of classes. We are currently looking at those policies. We think they might be a little too stringent to give those students who maybe come from a state organization... to give those students who maybe come from a state organization who cannot register until that first week, some better opportunities. So we'll report back when we have those changes in place. As far as the student success course, we do have one and students who test into two developmental areas are required to take that, other students, we may recommend it and they may take it as well. And then, of course, the Smart Start Orientation puts a lot of effort into explaining all the various resources that are available to our students. In regards to early advising and career exploration, this is embedded in the Smart Start Orientation, they complete a Focus 2 to see where their interests lie and then we introduce them to the various career and academic communities. We also monitor various milestones as they progress along their path. Our advisors are set up to be case managers, so there are specific students within the different career and academic communities that are assigned to the advisors. Also, our faculty and members of the particular discipline area mentor our students, share with them advice as they progress. And then the students have a visual of their progress to graduation in their MySPC. And then, we did have an early alert system in place, but we're transitioning that to a faculty notification system in my courses called Spark, which we have found to be more successful in obtaining a response from the students. Then finally, ensuring that students are learning along their path, we have a periodic review of student learning outcomes and successful transfer and employment. We have the three-year program reviews annually, we look at each of our programs in regards to their viability. Obviously, our advisory committees are giving us input on what's changing within the field or what things we need to keep in consideration and there are regular curriculum and pathway reviews as well as we present the student success data to the board every term. In regards to professional development to improve student success, as you know, we have our Center of Excellence in Teaching and Learning that provides onboarding for all-new faculty and adjuncts. We also have professional development for our faculty, these can be obtained through grants, sabbaticals. We are currently, this year, doing a moratorium on external travel because of budgetary concerns or constraints and we're focusing on the local and internal and there are many of those opportunities available to our faculty. So, ongoing internal professional development, regular online services training, as well as college-hosted conferences such as narrowing the gulf or moving the needle. In regards to minimum qualifications for hiring faculty, all of our faculty candidates do a teaching demo, the deans review their teaching experience as well as their credentials to ensure that they're discipline-specific. And then they go through a myriad of interviews with the faculty in the department, the dean, provost of the campus where they are likely to be housed, and then the president and myself also interview them to make sure that the right people are getting into those positions. Back in 2013, the evaluation system for faculty was revised as well as the continuing contract guidelines based on state statutes. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we would just ask that then the memo, which has these items specifically laid out, which is actually part of the pre-institute work that we will be submitting.
We need to approve those and so for a motion?
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we just have one other item. While we're at the institute, there is an article attached for your reading in regards to policy leadership and they will be holding a town hall meeting and if there are any specific questions that you would like us to submit in regards to current state policies and the environment for community college reform, funding models or funding incentives for institutional change, transfer or other state policies, if you could let us know before you leave today, then we will submit that. And thank you to Mr. Gibbons and Ms. Cole for their willingness to attend with us. We're looking forward to that.
We are looking forward to it. Thank you very much, Dr. Cooper. Moving forward through the action items, so we can have these, have quorum here to vote, I think we, next we need to approve the personnel report with Human Resources.
Motion in a second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving forward to our consent agenda, oh, construction, sorry. Mr. Wector. Sorry for the skipping around this morning.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
For presentation in action today is Phase 2 Construction Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Student Success Center at St. Petersburg Gibbs. And let me start by going backwards a couple of months, at the August meeting, you approved the schematic design and the Phase 1 construction, which is all the underground infrastructure, chiller lines, water lines, sewer lines, telecommunication lines and all that stuff. That work is currently underway and that work will take until about the middle of December to complete. At that time, in August, we also talked about the opportunity to bring forward some early scopes, which is what we're here today to talk about, specifically structural steel foundations and fortunately, we're also able to add the masonry package to this guaranteed maximum price. In September, we brought you an update and we told you in September that we would try to have this ready for October and that's in fact why we're here today. So, for your, for your consideration today is the guaranteed maximum price for the foundations, the structural steel and all of the masonry components for the building. Talking about scheduling, you've seen this before, except for the last couple of lines that have been added and I'll drill down into those a little bit more as we talk here. So, going back to August, you approved the schematic design and the Phase 1 construction, that construction, as I said, will take till about the middle of December. This construction, Phase, Phase 2, will begin immediately after and that will take approximately six months to complete. At the end of that period, what we will see on the site is all of the structural steel and all of the masonry walls, stair towers, elevator pits, anything, the first floor will be poured, the second floor, the third floor will all be poured, so all the masonry will be constructed, it'll look like a building shell essentially at that time. While we're doing that, the design build firm is working hard to complete the 100% documents for the rest of the construction. Those documents will be vetted, permitted, reviewed, SWIFTMUD applications, all of that stuff, advertised, those bids will be received and vetted and then we'll be back to you late in the spring, which is the second to last line, we'll be back to you with that 100% guaranteed maximum price. The additional advantage that this scenario provides is that by then, we will also know, hopefully, from the legislature, the status of our final request and our plan, of course, is to incorporate that into this final 100% package, so we come back to you one more time with 100% drawings, a completely budgeted project for your approval at that time. So, things are looking good and that's all I have, other than to ask for your approval of this Phase 2 package.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being so responsive and moving that along, we appreciate it. Moving on to the consent agenda, there was no old business, for new business, we have workforce and professional development curriculum changes that were included in your packet as well as the grants restricted fund contract with the OAG.
Do we approve?
Mr. Gibbons, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a discussion.
Oh, you, okay, what would you like to discuss?
On the, on the, we're asking for this workforce and professional development courses, the changes, Dr. Williams, what is therapy for 24 hours, 28 hours in therapy? HHP, O377 and then L.
For therapy.
I believe that's with the CNA program?
Yeah, it says CE Health.
Yes. Yeah.
I just don't know what the course is, can you explain?
Is it IV therapy?
Yeah, what?
Fibotomy or IV therapy?
Oh, okay.
Instead of Roman numerals, I think it's IV as in intravenous.
Oh, okay, I was like, that doesn't make sense.
Is that right?
So, with therapy, I'm like, that doesn't make sense. All right.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any input? That's it. Thank you. And now, Ms. New, we have direct support organizations report and several action items dealing...
I believe that's just the approval of the audit reports for the three nonprofits.
Okay, perfect.
I move that we approve the audit, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? All in favor?
No.
That motion passes. And I believe we've made it through, do we want to go back and do our monthly reports?
Do we have to vote on?
Oh, we need to vote on that, I'm sorry.
Starla, so you have to adjourn.
Yes. Again, I apologize for the back and forth with this, we're going to adjourn our meeting as the St. Petersburg College Board of Directors, can I have a motion and then we can reopen as the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Board to receive that report because there is action, that way we can conclude that business, we can reconvene as the college board for our final report, so. Is there a motion to adjourn and we can do it all in one motion? A motion to adjourn and reconvene is the collegiate high school.
I made a motion that we adjourn and reconvene.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Starla, thank you.
Good thing I read Robert's rules before.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and Dr. Williams. I'm Starla Metz, the principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School. This morning, I am bringing forth two agenda items for your consideration and approval. The St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Audit for the 2016-17 school year and a plan to expand accelerated options at St. Petersburg College. Each of you received a copy of the audit in your packet materials. I am pleased to inform you that there were no recommendations or findings. Do you have any questions regarding the audit for me? Then may I please request your approval so I may share it with Pinellas County Schools?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a plan to expand accelerated options for middle school and high school students at St. Petersburg College. The plan is comprised of two phases. Phase 1, the replication of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School in North Pinellas and Phase 2, exploring accelerated options to help strengthen middle school, middle school students' academic foundation and to better prepare them to meet the criteria for accelerated options here at St. Petersburg College as well as strengthen their post-secondary success. The replication of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School is recommended to provide the students of North Pinellas an opportunity to attend this high-performing high school closer to home. A summary of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School and a rationale for replication was included in your packet materials. For several years, St. Petersburg Collegiate High School has had far more applicants than openings. For the 2017-18 school year, over 110th graders and 20 11th graders were still on the waitlist at the beginning of the school year. Applicants have requested a North Pinellas location for several years. Furthermore, applicants who live in North Pinellas sometimes decline the invitation to attend St. Petersburg Collegiate High School due to the far distance from their residence. Replicating St. Petersburg Collegiate High School in North Pinellas not only allows North Pinellas students the opportunity to attend this nationally-recognized high school, but also allows them to be more engaged in the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School and St. Petersburg College activities and events as well as affording our sophomores the opportunity to stay after school for free tutoring by reducing the travel time to and from school. Upon your approval to replicate in North Pinellas, the first step is to complete and submit a letter of intent to the charter school director for St. Peters, for Pinellas County Schools. Next, the designated personnel would determine which campus, Clearwater or Tarpon Springs, is the most viable campus to house the program. And then finally, the charter school application would be written for submission on or before February 1, 2018, for an opening of August 2019. The Pinellas County School Board has 90 days to approve the application. Upon their approval, the following timeline would guide our steps. March to April 2018, we would determine if any facility preparation would be needed. November 2018 to January 2019, we would market St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, North Pinellas, to students and their families. Currently, we do this by mailing a letter introducing the program and inviting students and their parents to attend an information session. In early January, a reminder postcard is also sent to those same families. We also encourage home education and private school students who learn of our program in the community or via our website to attend these information sessions. In February through March 2019, we would have our application deadline, we would conduct the lottery, we would send letters of invitation and the waitlist would be created. January through April 2019, we would collaborate with Human Resources to post positions and hire personnel. In May through July 2019, we would utilize the current SPC HS reserves to order any required materials or equipment and this is allowable under House Bill 7069. And then finally, July 2019, St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, North Pinellas, would begin earning funding for their projected enrollment and we would open in August 2019 in North Pinellas. The second phase of the plan is to explore various middle school acceleration models leading to an associate in arts degree with a suggested implementation timeline of spring 2020. One of the things that we would like to do is research and visit highly effective models to consider, which may include a STEM program such as the innovative program at Howard University, which I am visiting in November. Also, we might want to look at a 612 model such as the one at State College of Florida Collegiate High School and various enrichment offerings in collaboration with St. Petersburg College Departments and Pinellas County Schools such as offering STEM programs at this beautiful facility that we're at right here this morning, mentoring or tutoring and enrichment programs for middle school students to better prepare them, again, for our accelerated programs that we offer here and for post-secondary success. After researching these highly effective models, a detailed plan will be presented to St. Petersburg College leadership for their consideration and to determine the next steps. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a couple of comments, great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see this is coming. I guess I should be on the record and say that future Speaker of the House, Representative Brows, has asked that this thing is in Tarpon, so I would number one, say let's consider putting it in Tarpon Springs. Two is, I'm glad to see that we're moving to the collegiate middle school and high school plans so that we have a feeder program that would allow us to have these students ready. I know Mr. Foster will probably support me 100% in what I'm about to say. Communication is gonna be the key with the school system in terms of getting this accomplished. We may as well tell them we'd like to have two collegiate middle schools and another collegiate high school for Midtown in that area where failure factories as the headlines of the newspaper over the last two years in terms of where our elementary schools are going, we would have to, I would think that we'd want a feeder from elementary to middle right into high school in the Midtown area and make sure that those folks and young people as well as in the Tarpon area. So I'm not saying we take any of these out, I'm saying we prepare them, the school system that we're gonna be coming back, because I know they don't like us doing these programs, I gotta tell you, but I think long-term... But I, I think, long-term, we need to notify them and let them know upfront that I would like to see, and I know Mr. Foster, you may chime in on this, I would like to see not only the collegiate middle school south, the collegiate middle school north, somewhere. And if you're not going to put the collegiate high school, uh, on the Clearwater campus, maybe, maybe Clearwater is the place for the collegiate middle school at some point. And then, but I think you got to have both of them, north and south, and I definitely think with the focus that we have on the elementary schools in St. Petersburg, there has to be a plan for us to long-term have a collegiate high school there as well. And I know I don't want to hurt, I don't want to hurt the Gibbs campus, so, but what I am saying is, let's prepare ourselves to have a feeder into the Midtown camp, campus as well. And with all of the buildings that we own there, as well as my conversation, I know with yours, Dr. Williams, with the superintendent, they don't, they can't fill up John Hopkins already, so he, they're trying to figure out how to do with that space, so. I know that that was one of the considerations for the middle school, but long-term, when our planning in December, maybe we need to discuss how we go back to them and if we really, um, will be able to accomplish all of this, and how do we ask for it, so.
Well, I did have a, um, great meeting, um, with Dr. Greg Oden, we're following up on that meeting to, um, improve the relationship between the college and the school district. We focused a lot on the vocational work that we're doing and how we can partner there and build a streamlined plan. She also talked about the collegiate high school and the collegiate middle school. Um, the superintendent had some questions that I answered, and we'll continue to work around those reins. He does know that this is the plan.
You can continue to have those meetings, don't take me, you want to take one of them. The last time we had a meeting, he, he went, I don't think they want to have another meeting with our board, so.
So we need a motion to...
I'd make the motion that we accept this plan, um, um, as presented by Ms. Metz. With, um, with, also with the authority for Dr. Williams to go have discussions with the school board about maybe modifications on expanding that out long-term to look at, um, what future sites may look like so we can prepare the school system for, you know, some of the stuff that we're talking about doing as related to collegiate middle schools and high schools.
Second?
Law and motion? Yeah, I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Discussion, please.
I have a couple of questions. And you may have said a number and I didn't hear it, what's your projected enrollment when you open?
230.
Okay. I look at your facility request, five classrooms, a common area office, is that sufficient for not only what you're anticipating, but any potential growth or...
It depends on the model we select. So, if, for the current model that we house on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus, that is sufficient. If we decided to add grade levels each year, so, um, let's say that at some point after we replicate, we decide that at St. Petersburg Gibbs, we want to add a grade level, and we can do that as a high-performing school by adding one grade level every year. And if we wanted to work backwards, so, at ninth grade, then eighth grade, then seventh grade, then sixth grade, we can do that as a high-performing school, we simply notify Pinellas County Schools, then we would have to take a look at whether or not any more space would be available in the current building that we are. So, um, depending upon, um, what the vision is long-term, if, we need to take a look at facilities long-term as well as we're planning. But for right now, just replicating 10 through 12, which is the exact model, that is plenty of space for us.
And, uh, budgetary impacts on our existing budget overall, is this...
Um, I anticipate that it would take probably $500,000 to $600,000 max to get the program up and running. You saw my audit, you saw my reserves, that still would leave me a nice cushion. House Bill 7069 allows us to take those reserves and use it for another charter school under the same nonprofit entity in the same district, which is what we would be doing. So this is cost-neutral to the college, um, in terms of getting the program up and running. The projected enrollment of 230, we know that's the magic number to be able to be self-sufficient, so, I think that's a good number and we could move forward without impacting the college's budget negatively.
I think it's the greatest thing since indoor plumbing, so this is good, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Foster, I would agree with you, but I, I think that we should, in our, in our December budget, I mean, our December planning session, we should discuss, maybe asking the legislature the next two years for some funding to help with collegiate high school, so that we can look at facilities.
Any other discussion on the motion, which was not only to approve the plan, but incorporate authorization or request for Dr. Williams and Ms. Metz to go to the school board to discuss additional expansion in no particular time period, but forthcoming? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I believe those are, that concludes all of our action items. We do need a motion to adjourn as the St. Pete Collegiate High School Board and reconvene as the St. Pete College Board of Trustees, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and we know Mr. Gibbons may have to slip out, so thank you for being here this morning. And thank you all for bearing with us as we shuffled around. So moving back to, um, Section 5, Monthly Reports. Ms. Garden, Ms., Mr. Lang, Ms. Gardner?
There is nothing to report this meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning, nothing for me to report. I believe we may have skipped the minutes, the approval minutes?
Oh, we did those very first.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Dr. Ulrich?
Well, I am Dr. Shannon Ulrich, and it's my honor and privilege to be here as the faculty governance organization president. Today, I'm excited to share a brief FGO update with you all. I'm going to start with introducing you to the current FGO leadership, because there have been some changes.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to move on and let you know the plans for the Classroom Experience Committee, and I'm going to leave you with a couple examples of faculty who are making connections between the classroom and the community. I want to start by introducing you all to me. I actually am an enthusiastic microbiologist, and if you take a look at your slide, you will see in the top, uh, left-hand corner, my signature dish, which is a Petri dish.
Ah, there it is.
And it includes three different bacteria, which are Pseudomonas originosa, the Ulrich is written in Seratia marsensis, and the bottom yellow is Micrococcus ludius. And fun fact for you all, since I'm an educator at heart, the bottom yellow is actually commonly isolated from human skin, so it's on you right now.
Never seen that.
Sorry, I can't help myself. Uh, I've worked with a variety of microbes out of range from viruses to bacteria to archaea, and I teach a range of science courses at the Clearwater campus. On top of that, I have been the Clearwater Chairperson for the past three years, FGO Chairperson for the past three years, and I now am honored to be the FGO President. We've also had a couple of changes in the FGO leadership at the different campuses, so I wanted to walk you through who those individuals are, so I direct you to the center picture on that slide, same slide. We're going to go from the left and work our way over to the right. Starting with the left, you see Jeff Briggs, he is the representative for the Health Education Center. Then we have Sinida Kumari, she is a representative for the Seminole campus. We have Albert Farr, who is a representative for the St. Pete Gibbs campus, there's myself. And then Jim Wallace for Tarpon Springs, and at the very end is Melanie Payden, who we've already seen several pictures of in the QEP presentation, uh, she represents Clearwater campus. Also on this slide, I have included a list, because I am an avid listmaker and I love my lists. This is basically just a general task list that I've made for myself and for FGO this semester and leading into next semester. Uh, on the very top of that list, you will see in very small writing, to get caught up from Hurricane Irma, so we are still working on doing that faculty as a whole. And moving to the rest of the things that are on the list, um, it's not explicitly on that list, but kind of in general, helping to me to make that list is this underlying goal of enhancing communication. I'm a firm believer that efficient and effective communication is needed in order for us to be inclusive. So, uh, to start, we're going to work on communication within our own organization. Currently, we have an FGO SharePoint site, and it hasn't been updated for several years, so I want to work on updating that, um, I want to include meeting agendas and minutes from each campuses, uh, and also from our Senate meetings, and I also want to put in pictures of the leadership so that people can easily identify at each campus who does what and who you can talk to if you have questions or concerns. So I kind of tasked that as the FGO website, even though it's the SharePoint site. Also, um, kind of speaking to this idea of communication, we want to start to bridge kind of this communication gap between administration and faculty, and we have actually started by inviting, uh, vice presidents to join our FGO Senate meetings. So far, we've had visits from Dr. Cooper's, Dr. Cooper and Dr. Coraggio, and at their particular meeting, we actually came forth with two proposals, so working together already, we are moving forward. Uh, we also had a visit, uh, two weeks ago, one week ago, from Brian Miles and Jeanette Hunt, and they covered the budget for us and talked to us a little bit about the breakdown of that budget, so we really appreciated that, and it, it was insightful, and faculty were able to ask questions that they otherwise wouldn't have been able to ask. Uh, in addition, I've been working with Deborah Boyle and faculty to arrange classroom and office visits for Dr. Williams at each campus, so she is going to be making a tour of all the campuses. In fact, she is going to be coming to my microbiology labs as well, very excited. Moving on to the Classroom Experience Committee, uh, Dr. Williams has tasked FGO with the classroom experience, and this is something that she has said she wants in our hands since basically day one. So I have met with Dr. Cooper, and her and I have agreed that a Classroom Experience Committee would be beneficial to address, uh, this kind of initiative, and we decided that, uh, the committee would be made up of both deans and faculty. So I'm co-chairing the committee with Dean Joseph Leopold, and we are currently working to compile a list of faculty members that have been recommended as well as volunteered to be a part of that committee. I've also met with Dr. Cooper and Dr. Coraggio, and they have helped me to gather some data on classroom-related matrices that have been analyzed in a variety of different reports. Uh, the two reports that we've looked at thus far are the Student Survey of Instruction, which is our internal SSI report, and also the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, affectionately known as CSE. So there are some data points in there that we're going to be addressing with the committee, and we're going to compile and look at that data at our very first committee meeting, which we're going to hold on November 17th, and that will be in the collaborative labs, which I really love those collaborative labs, it allows for engagement to occur. During that meeting, not only are we going to look at that compiled data, but we're also going to kind of define mission statement of the classroom. And we're also going to look at areas of focus. Upon leaving that, uh, committee meeting, we are going to then reach out to faculty and to discuss ideas, and then also talk about some of the best practices that are going on now, because we don't have to reinvent the wheel, there are faculty out there that are doing amazing things in their classrooms. And that actually is a good segue to my final piece of today's presentation. I just want to leave you all with a couple of faculty highlights. Oh, there we go. This first one is actually with Kelly Stickrath, and she is at the Tarpon Springs campus, she teaches biology course. She works with the Clearwater Audubon Society, and you can see what that relationship brings to the classroom, wild animals. So she is able to have animals in the classroom, and the students get an unclos and personal experience. And I just want to point out a couple of things in these pictures. Uh, one, we have a student that is taking pictures, so we have art and science being bridged together. And then also, I have to put, point this out, or else Professor Stickrath might be upset with me, she doesn't in fact have three arms. She just has two, just the two arms, and that is the handler of the owl, she wasn't allowed to hold the owl, so. Alright, and my second highlight, actually, uh, I thought was really appropriate because it occurred here at the Bay Pine STEM Center. Uh, we actually had two faculty members, Dr. Michelle Ossovitz, which is pictured here, and I'm sure you all know Dr. Lene Beemie, she is the interim director for the STEM Center here. Uh, they partnered with the University of South Florida College of Marine Science, the Florida Wildlife Commission, or, excuse me, Conservation, and a local startup biotech company to establish a training workshop for students. During that training workshop, the students, as well as the faculty, were taught how to use innovative technology to detect organisms that cause harmful algal blooms using nucleic acid-based techniques and technologies. They ultimately hope to continue this partnership and then actually take that out into the field and monitor local environmental waters using the same technology. And with that, I turn it over to you all for any questions or comments you have.
Wonderful, any comments? Thank you.
Yeah, quick question, I guess, and I appreciate, I love the FGO model, I like the interaction and communication between faculty, administration, and deans and all that. And I guess this might be more a question for Dr. Williams. Is, is there another union push that is out there? I mean, are we still kind of dealing with that issue?
Well, I don't believe we're dealing with that issue right now. The faculty, um, governance organization has opened its doors. Um, we're going out eagerly to meet with faculty and hear their voices. I have met, um, with the leaders who proposed the union, I met with them individually to hear their voice, to hear how they felt and what was going on, and, uh, we're utilizing the information I learned from that as a part of moving forward and, and getting the college together. So, that was a meeting I had about a month ago with the union, um, proposers, so I think we're in good shape for now.
Great.
Trying to make it the people's achievement, so we're trying to integrate everybody's voice.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question.
Ms. Trimble?
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams. My name is Jeanne Trimble, and I'm the Chair of the Career Service Employee Council, which represents over 600 career service employees at St. Pete College. Our new E-Board members this year are myself as Chair, Vice Chair Kimberly R. Williams, Secretary Sherrell Essex, Treasurer Karen Nado, and Past Chair Mary Jo Gali. Our 2017-2018 nominations filled 23 of the 24 campus representatives in the service areas of Administration, Facilities, and Student Support. I would like to take a moment to demonstrate how CSEC can enrich the lives of career service employees while incorporating Dr. Williams' four Cs. Culture. Who is CSEC? It is every career service employee represented by the Steering Committee. We try to build a culture of integrity and trust for career service employees. A culture of trust is needed for a solid foundation of exceptional customer service. There is no better platform for career service employees' ideas, questions, and concerns in a non-judgmental setting. Communication. Regular meetings with Dr. Williams, the executive team, and campus leadership provides answers to career staff questions in a timely manner. We communicate using face-to-face, email, and SharePoint. Collaboration in CSEC takes many forms. For example, development of the Growth Plan, a collaboration between CSEC and Human Resources. Our HR liaison, Jennifer Palmer, and Professional Development Liaison, Dr. Yvonne Williams, work closely with our Professional Development Subcommittee. All CSEC members also collaborate with other departments, plan our events, and bring ideas and concerns to campus leadership and the executive team. Creativity is evident in the exchange of ideas that flow from career service staff to their CSEC representatives. Many of these practical suggestions have been implemented into various phases of college operation. So we believe that our new CSEC will fit prominently into the fifth C, the SBC, Community of Care, as we seek to enrich relationships with career service employees. Our first order of business this year is SBC Discovery Day, which we are very excited about. We plan to have two informational and fun sessions entitled, "CSEC 101: It's a New Day for Career Service Employees." Session one, Team One, will consist of myself, Karen Nado, Russell Oriol, and Brian Flaherty. Session three, Team Two, will be Kimberly R. Williams, Toby Sharp, and Tara Hunter. These sessions will be... These sessions will be an SS 160. We also have a speaker, Henry Johnson, at the 10:00 AM session, which is Session Two. Mr. Johnson is the SPC Community Relations Coordinator, and his topic will be Revived, Renewed, and Reaching Our Highest Potential. In closing, some CSEC goals. CSEC intends to brand itself to make the council relevant to all career service. The CSEC E-Board will make campus visits to promote CSEC. And lastly, we will continuously find ways to engage and enrich the lives of career service employees. Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our reports, we had intended to have an online success rates report in response to some of Mr. Gibbons' questions from last month. But in light of the time and his necessary departure, we're going to delay that again. And if we need to, we'll bring that back. So now we have Learning Beyond the Classroom.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Williams, Board of Trustees. My name is Tara Newsome, and I have the privilege of being a faculty member here at the downtown campus, as well as the Director of our Center for Civic Learning and Community Engagement. And I'm here with my colleague and friend, Davy Gill.
Hi, I'm Davy Gill. I'm the Coordinator of Student Life and Leadership at the St. Pete Gibbs Campus, as well as the Athletic Director for the college.
And we are delighted to be here today to talk about the heartbeat of St. Pete College, the heartbeat of our past and our promising future, and that is student and community engagement. It is actually one of the most powerful tools in student success. SPC's commitment to community was amplified when Dr. Williams took the helm as president and offered to our SPC family the words that typify and exemplify the very spirit of SPC, that at the college's core is a commitment to service and community. Community and student engagement is part of the Board of Trustees' strategic priorities and is one of the best practices of the American Association of Community Colleges' commitment to serving students. We are to build into our very institution and nurture a sense of social responsibility, ethic of service, and civic skills, as well as professional development skills. This snapshot shows you just a quick, brief look at just two semesters of self-reporting data of students at SPC that engage in service learning classes, classes where service is tied to learning outcomes, to civic engagement and college-wide days of service with a self-reporting tool that we call Engage for Change. And as you can see, the impact that SPC students have, their staff, and their faculty is far-reaching.
Now, we'd like to present a breakdown of some of the data that we're collecting here at SPC that really measures the impact that these out-of-class activities has on our students' retention and success rates. St. Petersburg College has taken the lead in developing a quantitative method that allows us to measure the impact these activities have on the persistence and success rates of our students. Theresa DeMure from Institutional Research, Israelis Frank Jorkovic from Student Life and Leadership, have developed a software system that helps us collect the information when students attend these events. That information is then loaded into Business Intelligence and provides us the opportunity to compare those success rates of the students that are active against their counterparts who are not engaged in campus activities. It also gives us a chance to kind of drill down into the information and helps us with our planning as we move forward. We're going to take a look at some of the data from the initial collection of some of this research, which is the cause of us to kind of expand what it is that we're doing. The top table shows the retention rates for students enrolled in credit courses during the fall that continued through the spring of 2014. As you can see, retention rates were very similar for students taking classes throughout the college, and specifically those that were taking classes at the downtown and midtown campus. However, when you look at the students who are engaged in at least one campus activities, you see a serious increase of 11.3 percentage points when you compare those to the students that are not involved. If you look at the second table, it shows the success rate based on the semester hours taken by the same group during just the fall term. Here you can see, college-wide, there was a 76.4% retention rate. And that number increased 6% for the students who were involved in at least one activity.
SPC develops student engagement systemically. We help students through various institutional initiatives, through academic communities, student life, athletics, community investment. But the first is by responding to emerging community needs. And that's through our outreach efforts. And I think Titans for Texas is a great example of an illustration of cross-pollination at the college, something that we do extremely well and is a hallmark of SPC, where faculty, the president of the college, athletics, student life, staff, and community organizations partner to respond to an important community activity. And the hurricane season this year was acute. Before Irma even came to us, SPC, through the leadership of Dr. Williams and student life and faculty, responded to our friends in Texas, many of whom are students actually live and have family there. And so this kind of collaboration is really how we execute student engagement and community engagement and actually sets St. Pete College up as a statewide leader. Dr. Williams, Davy, and myself ended up proposing to the state college system an entire systemic response to the hurricane, which was magnificently received and started a relationship among the colleges with SPC being the leader of that.
And I think it also shows our ability to react quick to these situations. As you all know, Hurricane Harvey may landfall on August 25th. By August 27th, we had a plan in place. That Monday, we began collecting items at our student life and leadership offices throughout the county. And by that Friday, just five days later, we were able to load up a truckload of stuff that was headed for Texas that Saturday. So it was a real community effort. It gave our students a chance to be involved, gave our athletes a chance to be involved. And it was just a really positive environment. It kind of helped them build in a community within our college family as well. The middle photo here is from our Florida Challenger Jamboree that's put on by the City of Clearwater. It's designed to develop the needs of students with physical and mental disabilities through sport and assist them with developing some of their physical and social skills. Our SPC Titans baseball team, under Coach Beckman, and our women's softball team, under Coach Myers, kind of provide a little bit of relief for the city of Clearwater. And our athletes are the ones who run the coaching, the on-the-field activities, and kind of help with the setup and takedown of those events. And this just represents two of the 17 community services activities that our athletes are involved in.
We also included a snapshot of the MLK Day of Service. And that's just one of three days of service that we do at college-wide in the community. But really, it's insufficient. We don't have enough PowerPoint time to share with you the kind of work that people are doing. As I was walking up here and I saw my colleagues, like Dr. DeMure's in the Ethics Department, Starla, the Principal of the Collegiate, to, I mean, I can name all of, Dr. Chang, working in the math department, to use math programs to infuse tutoring to lower-income and needy students. I mean, we have a breadth of service built into our institution that's truly magnificent. This is just a quick snapshot of the fact that we have 102 courses at SPC that use a service learning, community, and civic engagement. That reach leads us to a diversity of how students achieve success, and that's what we're all about, using academic mechanisms as well as student life mechanisms to create student engagement. This is not only to create academic excellence, but professional development and personal efficacy. It also highlights the fact that SPC is not a one-size-fits-all institution, that student innovation and the diversity of students is welcomed, and their service to the community is welcomed and developed in addition to that academic excellence. This is just another quick look at some of the breadth of what we do. We, of course, have internships in our coursework with the City of St. Pete, City of Clearwater we do as well. The upper right picture is our Model UN that has reached national merit. The picture on the left is a coral restoration project that's built into one of our faculty's coursework. And the bottom right is a reminder of how much we're committed to the Pinellas County school system. We have, Dr. Renard is on the board for the Take Stock in Children. We have Todd Smith in our financial services that sits on American Read, American Counts, and infuses that into coursework, connecting financial aid to tutoring services. The reach that we have is incredible. And finally, the last way we engage the students is through community investment. And this is incredibly important to SPC as an institution because it's trying to use relevant and timely activities in the community. Right now is the Shine Festival. This is an illustration of what we started last year, which was the Art of Politics Initiative, where you're trying to tie civic dialogue and the arts to have meaningful conversations and build pathways between the community, doing relevant projects, to the college. And it's sustainable and is an actual invitation to the community to partner with us and allows our students to feel like they're part of something relevant in the community. Theodore Roosevelt said, "Do what you can with what you have where you are." That's what SPC is really good at. Each one of us has different strengths, and we're able to partner all the way down from the top to the bottom and into the community to bring the community to SPC and for SPC to deliver to the community. I'm extremely proud to work here, and I'm extremely proud of my colleagues and myself and the SPC community that does such good work. And thank you for having us today. We welcome you to come out and volunteer with us. Tomorrow, we'll be at Habitat for Humanity at 7:00 AM. I'll bring the coffee. And then, of course, we'll be at the Discovery Day with CASA, talking about domestic violence and creating gift baskets and whatnot. And those activities go on all during the year. So if you're ever interested, please join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're good.
Good. Good job.
Ms. Miles. Ms. Hunt.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Board members, Dr. Williams. This morning, I have a brief report on our budget at the end of the first quarter and also some end-of-quarter budget highlights that I'd like to share with you. So our first focus is our revenue. You see here on the left side, we have our prior-year budget in actual compared to our current fiscal year budget in actual. You see here, at the end of the first quarter, we were at $26.7 million, which is about 44% in the year. You see that the budget, we did some realigning based on what the estimated student semester hours were. So you see that is attributed, we're running closer to where we actually projected. Our state funding, we've received $14.2 million. You see the year-to-year change is a little bit higher this year, while overall, in our state funding, we receive less. The ratio between our Florida college systems versus our lottery changed a little. Prior fiscal year, it was about 75 to 25. This fiscal year is 80 to 20. Knowing that the lottery revenues come in in February, we're starting, we see about $100,000 more this fiscal year than we did the last fiscal year at this time. Our overall revenue at $42.2 million, we're about 30% in our revenue budget. And last month, I mentioned to you that I wanted to keep in front of you that we're tracking the tuition projection. And so the red line represents the budget at $50.8 million for just the tuition portion. And then the blue line represents the actual and the projected of where we may possibly end at the end of the fiscal year. So now I want to look at the expenses. First, our personnel and benefits. We have actuals of $28 million, which is a little under 25% of where we are in the quarter. You see that each line item is less than what we spent in the prior fiscal year. With the exception of looking at the health insurance, we have $4 million. One of the things that we've done this year is that for one of our categories, like our other post-employment benefits, we typically would do a journal entry at the end of the year to recognize those expenses. We're recognizing those expenses throughout the year. Same trend with our current and our capital expense. You see the trend of we're spending less than we did in the prior fiscal year. And we ended the quarter with our revenue over expense at $6.3 million. So the last slide I wanted to share with you was some highlights that we ended this fiscal year. And first, looking at our revenue. I mentioned earlier that we were projecting a little bit higher, about $152,000. So we see here, what that really means is our fall semester ended, we actually exceeded the goal that we had anticipated. And so if we continue the year with that, exceeding that goal, and we remain flat on what we actually projected for spring and summer, we'd be about $152,000 over. Then looking at our personnel expense, we reduced our personnel budget by about $5 million. The majority of that was vacant positions. We do know that in addition to prior, in comparison to our prior fiscal year, we've spent $635,000 less this year than we did last year. And overall, in operating expense, we spent, in comparison to last fiscal year, $1.4 million less. Are there any questions?
Well done.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to commend you all collectively. Since I just joined the board ever so briefly since the spring, I've heard repeatedly it's less expensive to maintain a student and get them to re-enroll than it is to recruit a new student, and that the linchpin of that is going to be the experience that the students have in having them prepare for the classroom. And this morning's board meeting with all of you all, with the classroom experience by the FGO, the student engagement and community initiatives, the Collegiate High School preparing those students to get into St. Pete College and having success, all of those play in. And I think we're seeing the fruits of those labors and how it translates financially to the success of the college. So thank you very much. Next, moving through is, oh yes, Employee Health Insurance Follow-up. Sorry, that was added to the agenda.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Williams, members of the board. I'm Michelle Montega. I'm the new Senior Manager of Benefits and Wellness here at St. Pete College. Today actually marks my 90th day on the job here. So it's been a little bit of a whirlwind, but I'm happy to be here and happy to be presenting.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So today, we're going to address the questions that were asked at the previous board meeting, as well as introduce our draft three-year Benefit Strategic Plan. That draft three-year Benefit Strategic Plan is in your packet for you to review. It contains a variety of topics that we're looking at exploring. We'll be taking it to key stakeholders over the next couple of months for feedback. At the end of the presentation, we'll go through the timeline with you all for that feedback. So I'm just going to jump into the questions that were asked. So the first question that we had was about voluntary plans and what could we do to offer more? We are currently evaluating all of the benefit plans and perks that St. Pete College is offering to their employees. We are going to market in the spring of 2018. And when we do that, we'll be evaluating the plans that we can offer and what we can bring to the table. The key thing is, we just want to make sure that the plans that we are bringing have competitive rates and they're actually bringing something for our employees as a benefit. These are just some of the additional benefits we're looking at now. There's long-term care services, there's the Roth retirement option, legal services and pet insurance. So they're just things that we've already started looking at. But again, when we go to market, we'll be bringing back more options. We also had the question on what other types of medical plans are other colleges offering. So we took a look at what the Florida State Colleges are doing. 23 out of the 28 Florida State Colleges are members of the consortium. Out of that, 17 of those 23 colleges in the consortium are offering 100% college-paid employee-only benefits. They do offer buy-up plans, but those are at a significant cost increase. And then the non-consortium members are offering very similar plans to what we have here at St. Pete College, the HMO, PPO, and the HSAs. So kind of carrying along with the consortium, the question, I believe from Trustee Gibbons, was if we had looked at joining. So when we were at the COBA conference this year, we were able to get a fair amount of information from those consortium members. This is just a high-level overview. We haven't dug into the data too much yet, but when we go to market, we'll be getting more information on it. And this is just the highlights that we have from it so far. Consortium members are having rate increases this year. The rates are scheduled to be evaluated on a three-year basis moving forward. The average number of participants in the consortium is about 510 members per college. St. Pete College has 1,500 members enrolled in our medical health care plan right now. And the other key piece of information we wanted to share was that SPC has an annual wellness budget of $200,000. Consortium members are sharing a wellness budget of $100,000, which comes out to about $5,000 per school, which would be a big cut to our wellness budget as well. And then, I believe it was Trustee Stonecypher had asked about the retirees and what was the percentage increase that we were allocating to them. So the chart here gives you the percentages for the different plans, the pre-retiree and the post-retiree rates. And what we also did was we gave you the annualized retiree spend for 2016 and 2017 so that you can see the college is still covering a fairly significant amount of cost for the retirees to continue to be on the plan. Okay. And then we had the question about the ER, what types of claims are we seeing? Can we offer a tier deductible? So we just wanted to reaffirm what the So we just wanted to reaffirm what the Board had approved last time, which was that there was no change to our ER co-pay for the 2018 plan year. So then, aside from that, for 2016, our ER usage report shows that almost 42% of our visits were for non-emergency-related visits, so things that could have been treated at a walk-in clinic or a primary care physician. And then for the tier deductible, Aetna does not currently have any clients that are on a tier deductible, and we just found out that they don't believe they have the capacity to support a tier deductible for the ER. But they did give us the information that this is usually used as a way to deter frequent users from the emergency room. Frequent users are defined as people that goes more than three times per year. 87% of our members have less than three visits per year, so it probably wouldn't necessarily apply. Anyone who does have three or more visits, case managers from Aetna reach out to them directly to help them figure out primary care doctors and things like that. And then also, SPC, our ER cost share is at 17%. Aetna's average client is right about 23%, so we're still under what their average clients are doing for their cost sharing on the ER co-pays. Trustee Cole, I believe, asked about the convenient care clinics and if we could bring those onsite. So we have tasked this to the Wellness Committee, which is getting revamped. They've been doing advertising and seeking more members to jump on. They're supposed to be looking at the feasibility of this and doing a return on investment analysis to determine if this is going to be a good fit for us. We are considering a couple of different options. One would be if it's an SPC-maintained wellness center, so we hire nurses, it's ours, or if we go to a third party. We know Johnny Ruth Clark has reached out about doing some student services things. It could be something with them or daycare, or if there's a different alternative we need to look at. So that's something we've tasked over to the Wellness Committee to price out and figure out. Here's some additional information on what's generally covered on onsite wellness clinics. So you have the acute care health improvement programs, occupational health, primary care, and chronic care management. All right. So then we wanted to know what permanent changes can we make for long-term impacts to our plan? So one of our biggest things that we're doing is that we are going to market in the spring, and when we're doing those contract negotiations, those will make, those vendor contract changes, those will be permanent or semi-permanent improvement to the plan. We're also looking at other options like spousal surcharges and insurance waivers. We go into a little bit more detail on that in that draft three-year benefit strategic plan that's in your packet. And so next, I just want to review with you the timeline that we have for this draft plan. Today, or I'm sorry, last week, it was presented to the Insurance Committee for Feedback. Today, it's in your packet for you all to review. We're taking this to the VP Committee today as well. It's going to the Executive Committee tomorrow. And then over November and December, we're opening it up for other committees and groups to request presentations and information on the packet. Then in January, we'll actually present the packet to you, and in February, we'd ask for the vote to approve. That's my presentation. Are there any questions? And thank you for being so intricately involved in our benefits. We appreciate your feedback.
Informational reports are included in your packages. There is, there is no proposed changes to the Board of Trustees' rule. Yes? I'm sorry, and President's Report. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm very excited about what the Council of Presidents
Bill.
have been working on and bringing more resources to the Florida college system. Over the past three or four months, we've been really pulling together as a team and looking at what the Florida college systems need budgetarily. And so we put together a proposal asking for $286 million for the Florida college schools for this legislative session. Specifically, St. Hubert College would benefit from having about another $4 to $5 million that can be used towards cooperation needs. And so this document that's before you is what the college system is putting together. St. Hubert College is going to take this document and personalize it to SPC and what we need, and we'll have a legislative delegation meeting at the Tarpon Springs campus, and our great marketing team will make this colorful and students, and make it very nice. But I thought it would be good for the trustees to have, as you are working with people in the communities and maybe visiting Tallahassee with me, or seeing some of our legislators in the community, to specifically talk about what St. Petersburg colleges' needs are. I've had one opportunity to speak before the legislative delegates once. I gave them a handout at that time. I'm going to massage that and give them face too with this information to say this is exactly what SPC needs. We're going to go very hard this legislative session. Ed Woodruff and I had a phone conference yesterday about my business to Tallahassee and what I'll be doing to set up for SPC. Hopefully, we won't be the underdogs this year when it comes to the legislation. So we'll be working on that, and I want to make sure you have that in your hands. And that's all I have for this time of presentation.
Thank you. Is there any other business for the Board? Our next meeting?
Did you want to?
Oh, excuse me?
Did you want to knock out the other two audits? Or?
We took them all at once.
They were all done at the same time.
Did you have comments on any of the ones before? Okay. Any other business? Our next meeting, November 14th, at the Tarpon Springs campus. So thank you all, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Show mood.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you.